Lisa, please call the roll.
Cottam?
Here.
Feldman?
Present.
Michael?
Present.
Callender? Long?
Bruckerhoff?
Here.
Bowlby? McFadden?
Here.
Irwin?
Here.
Please sign for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me in prayer? Praise the Father, thank you for today, thank you for this city in which we live, thank you for the men and women who work hard every day to make sure we have power and utilities and keep us safe. Thank you for the work behind the scenes, pray for your guidance over this council and help us make wise decisions, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You said we have anybody signed up for call to public?
We have one. Mr. Guile.
You're aware of the rules?
Yes, sir. A Jonathan Bruckerhoff wrote from his official Claremore City Council Facebook site, "Thank you both for passionately standing up for your beliefs and stating your positions, but more importantly, thanks for being understanding and compassionate and stark contrast with your detractors. You were seen and you were heard." That was on his official city council Facebook page. And since the last council meeting, Governor Stitt signed House Bill Number 1217 by Kevin West and Maynard of the House, an act relating to obscene material, defining terms, making certain acts unlawful, providing exemption from liability under certain circumstances, providing penalties, providing preemptive, uh, preemption provisions, providing for codification and declaring an emolumentcy. Subject: Obscene material. Be it enacted by the people of the state of Oklahoma, Section 1, new law, a new section of law to be codified in the Oklahoma statutes as Section 1024.6 of Title 21, unless there is created a duplication numbering, reads as follows, as used in this section. Adult performance means any performance that contains obscene material, if done in view of a minor or in a public place. Obscene material shall be the same meaning as such term is defined in subsection B of Section 1024.1 of Title 21 of the Oklahoma statutes. Minor means an unmarried person under 18 years of age and public place means any area or space that the general public may freely access without payment or admission or permission However, any place that limits access pursuant to an admissions process or that restricts minors from entering the area or space to participate or take part in any event shall be exempt from provisions of this section. It shall be unlawful for a person to engage in an adult performance which contains obscene material or for any political subdivision of this state to allow, permit, organize, or authorize the viewing of an adult performance which contains obscene material.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other calls in public?
That was it, thank you.
Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Cottam?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Any items unprecedented time of posting?
No.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved. Second.
Cottam?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number two, presentation of the budget.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm gonna ask Grady Lemmons from the Finance Department to come up. Susan unfortunately had to leave today due to family emergency, so Grady's gonna help. I want to reiterate to everybody that this is just an initial presentation for you all. Our intent is to hold the required public hearing and ask for adoption of the budget at the second meeting in June. This way, we can get this out to you, get it up online, and people have a month to absorb. If you have specific questions, after this meeting, I'll be sending you not only a copy of the PowerPoint, but all those boring bars and lines of budget that you've seen that you all asked me to stop shoving in front of you. So, so you'll be able to go through each section and each budget, and that'll be made available as well. So, um, as is typical, we're required to present the budget. We're gonna do it once here. We'll have three public hearings in June, as is required for CCDA, CPWA, and the council. So, uh, we'll do that now, and we'll let Grady get started. And as we go through, um, keep in mind, the budget looks bigger, because there's the addition of increased funding expected from the, um, sales tax. There's also a lot of rollovers and, and on capital projects, so not new money, but projects or equipment that didn't get delivered prior to the end of the fiscal year, or we don't anticipate to. So there's about 10 or 11 million dollars of that in there. So, these big numbers are monies that you've already approved, they just, the projects haven't either been through, they're multiple-year projects of the like. So, with that, we'll let Grady take us through it.
They just wanna start off, say thank you Deputy Mayor, Council, City Manager, for this opportunity to present our proposed budget for '25 to '26. So we're just gonna go over tonight. Like John said, it's just very high-level priorities, stuff like that. And then like he said, there will be what we call the meet and vote later. So you can see total proposed budget, 135 million. Um, that's everything, anything that comes in, that's, that's all of it. Inter-fund transfers, so that's transfers from one fund to another, it's 21 million. So you take the total proposed and subtract the transfers, and you get the total operating budget of 113.5 million. So you see that little bottom thing, sorry. Uh, 10 million of that, just keep in mind, 10 million is rollovers for this year. And we'll get into a couple of those. So, where our sales tax goes, as you guys will see, on the far left, that purple column is new, that is part of what was passed on April 1st, and that takes place, or that takes effect, excuse me, July 1st of this year. So we'll have 4% sales tax revenue, um, so we have the new penny, and then the three other pennies that have stayed the same. Sales tax comparison, so, on the far right, you will see where we are currently at for this fiscal year. Everything on the left is previous years. Um, in yellow, and you'll see from down, we still have another month to receive, and it will say we are through May compared to last year, we are still higher on average for sales tax. Um, use tax, we're still on a good track with use tax. Um, you'll see we're about to hit that number again, with just one month left. Um, so, keep in mind with use tax, in conjunction with sales tax, that has also increased for the 4%. Um, so we have budget for that to come in higher as well. So, general fund revenue, 30.2 million. Um, far left is what we do every year, the normal one, it is the Fund 40, which is CBWA transferred to general fund. Uh, the column next to that, um, is, is for the Fund 93, which is our tornado. So this is what we're expecting, and John may jump in here too, this is what we're hoping to come in this next fiscal year, which is 3.4 million.
Yeah, obligated funds through FEMA, again, not easy. We're fighting them tooth and nail, so, um, at the end of this, we expect, or that our 75% share return funds that we had, had to spend and will continue to spend until this last project, is gonna be closer to 20 million. So we think what we're getting from them should be about 15. To date, I think they've sent us 1.3 or 1.4, and, uh, we are in a dogfight on three, three items right now, some of the larger items, so, um, as part of my advocacy trip, the first week of June in DC, it is for this very specific thing. But, we anticipate those funds, we were hopeful some of them would land this fiscal year, but with the transition and the disruption in personnel and everything going on with DC, it's just not gonna happen.
Right. And we, we hope for more to come in next fiscal year, but, uh, based with our discussions, that's about what we're expecting. Uh, transfers in, that's just all overhead that comes in. Um, you'll see the new 4.9 million coming in for city sales tax, and use tax is 2.8. We do budget conservatively, so we aren't looking to get more than that, obviously, but we budget conservatively on our tax. Um, you see other taxes, ONG Extension Line Grant. Later in this PowerPoint, you will see we have the ONG Extension Line Project, which is a rollover of 5.9 million. We are expect, we are getting back 4.9 million from the state, so out of our own pocket, it's about a million for that project.
Real quick on that, Grady, if I may, that's the legislation that was passed that actually named Claremore for some dollars. So, we have worked it out with the state and ONG, that we will actually be able to, ONG will invoice us, our engineers and, and inspectors will make sure that what they invoiced is correct, submit to, to the state, and then they will pay. So, from a cash flow standpoint, our match is the million dollars, so, with any kind of luck, if that's the agreement we have, um, they will pay up until the point where it's our turn to pay the million dollars. Or we might pay it upfront and get ours out of the way, but, from a cash flow standpoint, that's how that should work.
Yes. And then the last box is just our normal operating gravity. So, general fund expenses by department, as you will see initially, on the far left, that's that 5.9 million for the ONG Extension Line, which we just talked about, we get 4.9 of that back. Really just other high-level, you'll just see police and fire, those are two of our other large expenses there. Another one you'll see to the right of the ONG Extension Line, right there, you see the opioid settlement, that is new, in the current year, we are doing it now, it's part of a grant. Um, next year will be our second year going into that settlement.
And that's, is that both the grant process and then the automatic monies that we get annually for AT, or that's included in that as well?
Yes, sir.
So as part of that federal settlement, if you recall, I think the city of Claremore, based on population, we get $49,000 a year, but that lawsuit settlement of the federal side dictated what it could be used for, so, it's, uh, well, it's your world, you know, but we can't go buy toys and police things with it, so, it's for intervention, it's for prevention, it's all good causes, we're working through that process now, and we're also probably looking at utilizing these funds to reintroduce a K-9 program, um, for use in schools, which we have not had for many years, we used to. Chief Cox, our current chief, is actually the last K-9 officer we had. I don't know how long ago that was, but Stan made him get rid of it, apparently. Stan doesn't like dogs, that's, that's what came out of that. I just, I just, wait, there's, so there's the opioid joint grant opportunity that you all have approved for a second year to request, and then there's the dollars that come in from the federal lawsuit.
Um, just another note on the, right next to police, you'll see we're in the stuck in the multi-use firing range, which that's about a million, uh, we have for this next So, we're just gonna dive into a few of the major departments within governmental funds. Uh, first one, parks, their budget around 1.9 million, um, just high-level notes on their capital, um, a lot of that is just maintenance for a lot of the parks, resurfacing, things of that nature. And then see their salaries and benefits. Police, around 9 million, so that encompasses, the first one you'll see is the E-911, that's the dispatch services, everything with, uh, E-911. Uh, you'll see animal control, um, part of police capital expenses, they're gonna have the firing range, uh, different pieces of equipment, um, new four, I believe we're doing five Fords for this year, and then all the costs to equip those vehicles. For fire, we're at 8.7 million, um, we've got the emergency management. The biggest part of their capital is that new fire truck for 1.3, which, correct me if I'm wrong, John, that takes about two years.
Yeah, at, at minimum, is probably a 36-month lead time, so while we budget for it, we can't even order it or get in the queue until it's budgeted, we probably won't spend this money for three to four years. The last one came in earlier than expected, it took only 30 months. This is basically the exact same truck, only five years newer for another station. Uh, the thing to remember is, we talk about, I mean, that truck then cost us $700,000 five years ago, it's now 1.3 million. That's what is going on with inflation and pricing and...
Um, here's just, uh, some of the most notable capital expenditures for this upcoming year. Uh, that first one right there, that $3 million North Electric Reconductor Lines, uh, I believe, John, that's for like the Sub-3 Sequoia district area?
Yes, yes, Sub-3, everything comes out of Sub-3 and goes north, all of that infrastructure goes north and feeds Sequoia and east, is aging. Last year in the summer before, we had significant voltage issues, we've tried to do voltage regulators, the problem is, is that with the growth that's happened north and the draw on the, the lines are just undersized, and the poles are 40 years old. So, um, that was one of the highest priorities, so, when people ask you, what do we, you know, 4.9 with that one penny, what do you get? Well, 3 million of it's gone right there. We told our citizens we were gonna invest in infrastructure and fix things, and that's what we're doing.
Uh, then you see we got electric transformers, um, again, the ONG Extension Line Project, Frederick Road, that is just for the right-of-way utility relocations, I believe, total cost is around eight.
Yeah, the roadway, putting the roadway back will be another Ford, it'll be in the following budget year.
Um, and then you see on the right, we have TAP grants, um, again, a lot of this, like the TAP grants, CBG 23, those are rollovers, um, we have the overlay, the multi-use firing range, and then also the SCADA, or for the wastewater treatment plant, that is also a rollover as well. So here's just another, uh, or here's a view of it, excuse me, by category for capital, as you can see, um, a lot of it is infrastructure on the far left, um, then you have equipment, um, the 1.3 of the fire truck is in there, uh, vehicles, facility improvements, got the firing range, just projects, um, and then land acquisitions and improvements. So here you'll see, you know, we've got the ONG Project Electric and, uh, Street have the most for the capital, um, Street has different projects, again, 4.1 million of that, 5.6 for Street is just for Frederick Road, uh, so they have other, uh, different street projects within that as well, and then the electric, you know, 3 million of that is for the reconductor we just talked about as well.
And on that street, uh, I want to reiterate, we talked about our annual street rehabilitation program, which we allocated a million dollars for, 500,000 of that this year is what we're doing on the match to ODOT to re, to overlay 66 and Highway 88, in town, in the city limits. We wanted to use the other 500,000 dollars to address the small cross streets from Will Rogers Boulevard over to JM Davis, they're in terrible shape. The estimate came back at 3.6 million dollars, so, we're gonna pivot and we're gonna, we're gonna find a place. That 500,000 is in here, we'll use it on street projects, but I, it's kinda like putting lipstick on a pig, so we're gonna have to make that much larger, the apple project, so.
All right, so then we dive into the CPWA proposed budget. First slide here is gonna be for the debt, so, um, this kinda just shows you where we are at now with outstanding debt. In a perfect world, if we do not incur anymore, uh, by FY '36, that is where that total will be. This is encompassing, um, six different types of notes, um, and so, uh, it's basically just a slide for that. Uh, major revenue by department, um, just kinda outlines where CPWA gets their money. Um, so we have stormwater grant revenue, water revenue, electric. Um, at the bottom, that debt service transfer is from that Expo wastewater treatment plant penny. Um, keep in mind around, if we spend around eight point, we're gonna spend around 8.2 million in debt this year, so that only covers about half. Uh, major expenses by department, so you see stormwater, um, the debt service, which is around 8.2. If we do not incur anymore, um, in FY '27, it'll be close to around 6.6 million a year, but right now we're sitting at about 8.2. Um, the GRDA is at 20.5, um, and you have your electric, your sewer, water, and sanitation.
And I know you all get this, but sometimes people at home, they go, well, they're getting $34 million for electric, it costs us 20 and a half million to buy it, so, I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware that...
Yes.
It's a revenue of 34, but it's a net of about 14 or 15.
Correct.
And of that general fund transfer we talked about, the 995 million, it comes out of that remaining 14 or 15. So, we'll work towards moving forward, it's been my goal to reduce the amount of dependency on that general fund transfer. We couldn't ever do it prior to. Now we'll build up reserves, recover from the, and start, get to a point hopefully where we can reinvest more of that money back into the electric system and things they need there. Terrible, they're rude, they are rude. Okay, go ahead, Grady.
Uh, so here's just the total budget for electric, and this includes the GRDA, 20.5, and then some of the meters. Uh, capital, again, just, uh, transformers run 1.6, uh, 3 million for that reconductor, and then, uh, this other bucket truck, that we rolled in for this year as well. Sewer, um, just high-level with them is the, uh, ADA system, or 483 for the capital, and also, uh, Paradise Hills Lift Station pumps, which are around 160,000.
And the operational expense on that is the about 30% allocation of the contract with Infomark, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's the 70, 30 between waters.
70, 30, yes. Uh, water, again, you'll see that, uh, John just said, that's the 70% for Infomark. Capital, um, for water, uh, they're gonna have the diver inspection for the light dam, um, and then I believe, uh, dump truck, or one of the trucks is gonna be a little over Sanitation, um, they think their capital is just their, what they buy with their trash cans, and it's, it's their operational and salary spend.
And you'll notice that those operational expenses on that last are significantly lower than previous years, because we've divested ourselves on the commercial trash service. There will be revenue...
Yes.
From the contra, or the, but it's, so, there's a, it's a net gain. We looked at it, I figured that over the last few years, we, between operational expenses of trucks, workman's comp, increased dump fees, us not, over 15 or 20 years, not being at market rates where we should've been, we were probably costing citizens between 700 and 800,000 dollars a year. That's what it's costing us to operate it, and so there's gonna be a net, I mean, that's flipped and gone away, plus 10% of net revenue from the commercial service that we'll be working in town. So we'll flip that from a negative to, we, we estimate anywhere from 70 to 120,000 dollars a year will be our, our percentage.
All right, so last one, we'll dive into the CCDA Claremore Portural Development Authority proposed budget. Um, just right after that, uh, CCDA encompasses the Recreation Center and our Expo Center, so both total budget 2.5 million. Rec Center budget of 831,000, um, their main thing for their capital is just workout equipment for there. Um, you see operational and salaries and benefits. Expo Center, main thing for their capital is a new roof, which I believe is around 300,000 dollars.
We hope it's still around 300,000.
Yeah. And then you'll see their operational expenses and salaries for them. Um, 2020 capital notes, so I know y'all remember, we had a 2019 and a 2020. Last fiscal year, we used up all the 2019, we haven't, didn't use any of it this year because it was used up all for previous year. Um, so we have around 680,000 left in our 2020 note. On the left, you'll kinda see the projects we plan to use with this note, um, or for most of them. On the right, um, you'll see the estimated remaining cost of these current projects that we still have to finish for there.
And you'll notice the math is not, what's left will not cover them. I mean, these are projects that need to be done, we just utilize that, because that was back when we were borrowing money for like 1.29%.
Um, last one here is our 2023 OWRB loan for the water treatment plant. Um, this is for the quality of the water, the one that we did in 2015 is for the quantity, this is for the quality. Um, we have remaining left to spend 21.6 million out of this loan. Um, we've spent total around 7.5 million. This current year, we've spent 4.6 million of that on this project, so it's been...
And if you haven't driven by lately, from the lake park, you can see four giant white cylindrical tanks, those are the new green sand filtration, they just landed, I think, last week. So, those are the, those are the longest lead time items, I think we had to, the reason we did this two years ago was so we could get those ordered, that's how long it's taken to procure them, so they, they landed on site last week finally.
Grady, thank you, I, I sat down, um, with Grady and Susan briefly, and, and John gave me the full packet, and, uh, very impressed with, Susan came into the, the meetings with the departments and slashed a lot of their requests before it even got to John, and so they are, when they say...
And after. And after it got to me.
So, I know they're very conservative, uh, which is one thing I greatly appreciate, um, and putting so much focus on capital. But, uh, what I have looked over, uh, over the last week with all the material, everything looks good, very thorough.
Thank you. We'll get everything out, uh, to you this evening, if not, in the first thing in the morning, when my emails are...
Um, I don't, we don't have this as an action item?
That is correct.
So the motion to adjourn?
Cottam? Feldman? Michael?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Call to order the Claremore Public Works Authority meeting. Lisa, please note the roll. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Cottam?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
I think out of habit, we always have it on all three agendas, but since we're not doing the public hearing...
It's already been presented.
Yeah.
Any items unprecedented time of posting?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Cottam?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
If there's no objection, we will strike number two, unless everyone wants to hear the presentation again?
Great.
Motion to adjourn. Bless his heart.
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman? Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Call to order the meeting, Clmore City Council regular meeting, or special meeting, sorry. Lisa, please note the roll. I hear a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Any items unperceived at the time of posting?
No.
Mayor's report and appointments. I have nothing. Words of presentation, communications?
Nothing in that regard.
Staff reports.
Just simply that reminder that it is rodeo weekend, and so there will be a lot of extra people in town. Sunday will also be the one-year anniversary of the tornado. So, we're, everybody's excited about the rodeo, but a little on edge. And so, appreciate your patience in allowing us to pivot from Monday out of safety with the way the weather was moving through. We just felt, you could just kinda feel the tension all over the city. And so, thanks for your availability. Also, a reminder that myself, Deputy Mayor McSpadden, and Councilor Cotton will not be at the first meeting in June. It will be a very light agenda, as we will be in D.C. advocating for ourselves, in the sense, and we're taking that trip with the chamber. So, and wanna apologize to Michelle with Pafford. She's gonna have a, so we have a five-year agreement that was with Pafford for them to provide services, and that's, we need to renew that prior to the fiscal year. So, you'll see that on a June agenda as well. But they do a great job, and they're making a significant investment here in the community. So, we're very, I think they're gonna finally have a permanent home and stop, stop being a tenant.
Which should be breaking ground by the end of June.
Outstanding.
Fantastic.
We appreciate that.
Sorry, you have the engineering desk.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
For the rest of the council, I will be out that week too, so y'all have to show up.
Somebody's gotta pay the bills. Just, so, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I hear a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second. Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number two, one last chance to hear Grady present again. No objections, we will strike that item. Item number three, let's hear about our property insurance. Mr. Kooz?
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I appreciate y'all letting me come here today and speak. Dave has traditionally handled y'all's insurance here up here. He did suffer another event a couple nights ago, and has been in the hospital a little bit. But he is doing pretty good, and he should be back in the swing of things in a couple of months. He said, you know, that's just kinda usually how it works. But he's, he's doing good. I was over, I get, so you distributed, yeah, so you guys have had a chance to kinda look over your property casualty. Overall, it's up 26%, okay? At 26%, you're probably thinking is all right. Some of it is exposure. So, your building values, your contents, just your, your general exposure has gone up about nine and a half percent, okay? One of the notable ones that I'd like to point out is the addition of light poles. So, under your policy, whenever you moved back to the O-MAG policy, the light poles traditionally were covered by an extension. Well, when you have a large-scale tornado like you guys experienced, we start seeing the ends of the policy, as far as, we start hitting the walls where the policy stops and, and the limitations in it. One of those limitations we found was in the light poles, as far as, if you imagine if you had a policy that says it's gonna cover X, Y, and Z, you would think to yourself, okay, it's gonna cover this property. Well, then you have another coverage part that would pay for certain types of enhancements to that policy. Well, if you cover it under this enhancement, you don't get all the benefits of the other enhancements. So, we kinda hit those walls and y'all's claim a little bit. But overall, the choice to move y'all from travelers to O-MAG at that time, whenever we kinda did an analysis of it, a cost benefit to what we might have missed off, missed out on from being on another policy, it was still the right decision, as far as moving. With that said, O-MAG, over the last four or five years, has been very generous, and I would say has loose underwriting principles. What that means is if you had a municipality that says to itself, I'll give you an example. The City of Lawton, they have a mall there that kinda went under, like a lot of malls are doing. So, the city says, you know what? That would be great. We could do X, Y, and Z with that mall. They go in and purchase the mall and get some type of contract. Now, where are the situation? I think they purchased it, okay? But what they also just purchased is a huge roof. And they have a hailstorm come along and caused $40 million worth of damage. Well, that $40 million hits the O-MAG portfolio, right? So, they've learned a lot from aspects. It's not just, I don't need to use that as an example, but they've learned a lot over the last couple of years and are really getting things straightened out from a property basis. But that straightening out will create probably a situation where we're gonna have options at other carriers again. I know Dave and Marcio went out to all the traditional people we go to for municipal insurance. As you know, we insure about 800 governmental entities. And with several hundred, several hundred of them being municipalities or parts of municipalities, we do see next year that you guys having some options as far as where you place your property business. Any questions about any of that?
I'm, I was hearing, you know, 35, 40% increases, so 26? Who? I heard him say his lot this fall.
Well, it's actually, it's about 16 in general. You are not, in no way, shape, or form should you think that 16 is punitive, just because the way O-MAG works, it's one for all, all for one. Kinda why I bring up, maybe, John, I'm sure your involvement in your association could be greatly appreciated. You can take that note to spend a lot of time working for your association in your spare time, of course.
Been very active with it.
Were there roof 6s in this policy?
No, no.
I read some of that, but I said roof 6.
There might have been one. I did see a note that I think it actually would pertain-
Probably more likely to a specific structure.
Yeah, yeah. It was a, it was a very specific structure. It's the structure that it was due to some various, but not, not blanket, yeah.
And we did, it really was just O-MAG. Usually, we see like options.
Last few years, a couple, there's been very few that have bid for the business.
Right, right. Or if they were gonna give a bid, their terms were not as well.
Yes, that's correct.
So, prior to, prior to the tornado, we found certain terms more valuable than other terms, right? You know, it's, it's very difficult to sit there and say something that you got a frequency on being more beneficial to this municipality than, than a one-in-a-hundred-year situation. So, anybody with error on, these are gonna be more of our big rocks, this is gonna hit more, we need to leverage ourselves here. And then, of course, you guys have, you know, that once-in-a-hundred-year. So, what she was referencing is to 512 North, yeah, Wayland Avenue, I guess it's the part-
That's the, that's the building that was transitioned from an ice plant to the power generation plant in 1906. So, yes, it's been excluded for many, many years.
Yeah, that's the only one that I know of, anything like that. But next year, we are testing some smaller municipalities throughout the state strategically on a new AIG program. And if those bear out, that's also where we have probably another three or 400 governmental entities right now. If all of that bears out, they're gonna, they're gonna go into the mid-sized municipalities like yourself, which could be a huge thing for me, not only, not only from a cost basis, but a coverage basis.
That liberal competitiveness of market.
Yeah. Just on a general note, Senate Bill 1168 is definitely something that you guys are gonna wanna pay attention to.
We're following it, OML. It has to do with governmental court claims and, and raising the, anyway. I love our attorney, but there's one out there that is causing problems.
That's absolutely right. So, it got, it didn't have to go to the floor of either. And it got, ran in through the budgeting side, through J.C.A.P. or whatever. And it's a done deal. So, the only, outside of the per, the per individual limit, and then the aggregate, that's not gonna go to 2 million, and I believe it's a done deal, John.
Borrowing anything.
Right. It's, I was gonna say, it's a done deal. The one that I would point out to y'all is the sewer backup, because you're gonna notice on your liability policy that that's one of the clawbacks with O-MAG is gonna be on that sewer backup. They're changing that to 75,000. So, you're gonna have a little bit more exposure to a home with a little bit less coverage going forward. So, that's one of the ones I pay attention to.
Any question for Jared?
I too thought it would go up, so.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
Jared, thank you so much. The Boroughs Agency has been very good to look at all options for us for years, and I think we've had excellent coverage, and that takes a lot of work. So, any questions, comments?
I would just like to add, you know, we're a year out, but Jared and Cory and their team worked hand-in-hand with us. We're very appreciative of that, basically like a concierge-level service. It's so nice to have people that are in the community, from the community, their businesses across the street, and working with our consultant, their insurance specialist at Del Sol, O-MAG. So, thank you. You made the process easy for us. I know that Sarah, you spent a lot of time working-
Cory, more Cory.
But anyway, they were, people often ask, you know, why do you need agents or brokers? And I, we answered that question last year. So, thank you very much for that. And please, please give Dave my best.
Yes.
Now, here a motion to approve.
Thank you, Jared.
So moved.
Second. Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Jared, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number four, discussion possible reaction, action on resolution number 25-5. John, I'm not reading all of it.
No. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is something we had to pull from the last council election, because there was basically a Scrivener's error. So, this is, the last time that the city stood up a TIF or TID committee was about 20 years ago. And so, modifying that resolution, it had specific people named in the resolution on the committee, and I think four of them have been, are deceased now. So, but this is, this is authorizing, or passing the resolution to authorize us to stand up the TIF and TID committee, which will ultimately eventually encompass representatives from all of the affected taxing jurisdictions. So, that, that a potential project might land in. So, all this does is stand it up, we'll be reaching out to those bodies. They will appoint a representative. Statute clearly defines how this process has to work. And then, that committee will work on defining and proposing a project plan. That will ultimately have to come back before this body to be, to be approved. We're weeks, if not months, out on this, but we need to get going on it. So, this is the resolution, and the council item or the action is, is you all authorizing me to serve as the representative for the city. It's going to take a lot of time. It's gonna be a lot of work. And so, typically, that's how these work. I know the school boards will appoint their superintendents. The Rogers County Health-
Department?
Health Department Board is going to appoint their new executive director, who we had the pleasure to meet. Very nice man. So, that's what this resolution is for. There's gonna be a lot more about the specifics of the project as, as it develops, but we're a long ways out, as you know, on these, on these types of things. So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to question, any questions? Lisa?
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Item five, discussion possible action regarding wholesale development agreement.
Thank you. This is a development agreement between the City of Claremore and Grand River Dam Authority, who is our wholesale power provider. We are partnering with a proposed project to build out some infrastructure, and long-lead equipment needs to be acquired through GRDA for the extension of services. And that's what this allows us to do. Attached to that, there is a work order. So, as we need things, we will process work orders. GRDA will propose timelines, costs, things of that nature, get back to us, and we will execute those work orders. The ask is to approve the agreement with GRDA and allow subsequent work orders for consideration for me to authorize and execute those. Keep in mind, this will be a net zero cost to us. So, there's not a lot of expenses. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions? Lisa?
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion possible action on the Quartz Mountain Properties.
Yes, so this is also in reference to the item we just voted on with GRDA. This is an entity that's looking at making a significant investment. And if they do so, and the project goes through, this would be the agreement that we would need with them in order, as they say, here's the equipment that we need GRDA to order. Because GRDA cannot actively have a retail customer outside of the Mid-Americ industrial park, they cannot have a direct relationship with some of these entities. So, since we're a wholesale customer, and we will ultimately be a power provider if the project makes, they will fund, pre-fund what they need. We will order through GRDA. So, this agreement allows us to do that with Quartz Mountain Properties LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Lisa?
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion possible action on authorizing Trilliant Networks. Mr. White?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for helping me talk to you this evening. Been a while since I've been in this position. As you know, several, a year, a little over a year ago, we separated ourselves from the contract with General Electric, who was providing AMI network services for us to read all of our electric and water meters. As a part of that project, when GE first did that for us, they contracted with Trilliant to provide electric meters, as well as the main network devices that we backhaul that data and information on. At this point in time, we're in a position where we need to purchase meters from them, as well as a substantial amount of network equipment for stock, for remediation, and as well, and for to have redundancy in our network. So, those costs, there's only one place you can buy Trilliant equipment. It's from Trilliant. There are no other vendors. That is the only place to get it. So, we are presenting this as a sole source situation to you for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. There's no issues legally, since they're the sole provider? Any other questions? Lisa?
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number eight, possible action regarding the purchasing of AMI hardware.
In connection with the previous item, as we entered in, as we separated from GE and we became, entered in, and we entered into a contract with Trilliant, we were aware that there were some issues within our AMI network that needed to be addressed. Exactly where they were, what they were, we didn't know. So, we, part of the first contract with Trilliant was a network assessment. We hired them to go and look at all the data that we had coming in, look at all the devices, their location, their GPS coordinates, the GPS coordinates of all of our meters, and where we had weaknesses, where we were getting good reads, where we were needing some additional help to get reads, as well as redundancies. Right now, in our network, if we own extended bridge goes down, then that's gonna constitute somebody going out and rolling and reading meters or doing some estimated reads. None of those things are acceptable, especially with the targets we have set for ourselves over the next 12 months and what we wanna do with our electric system. So, it's requiring us to do some remediation work, to replace some hardware, to add some hardware, as well as to put some things on the shelf. Prior, if we had something go out, GE shipped us something. Well, GE's not there to ship it to us now, and lead time on this stuff is a minimum of 90 days. If we have equipment go out, we really can't wait 90 days for it. We need to have something on the shelf, ready to go today. So, the only option is to stock it, and keep a few of those items in stock. Unfortunately, they're not inexpensive to keep, but that's where we are. We will be adding- We will be adding an additional gateway. Currently, in our network, we have two gateways. They are redundant with one another, but if one of those goes out, we're with, only have one on hand, one in operation, we have none on the shelf. So in this process, we'll be buying two of those, one to deploy, so we'll have three deployed and operational, because it gives us some redundancy. And then the third one on the shelf in case we take a lightning strike, which we have some equipment that's down due to lightning strikes, I was notified of today. So it's just to help us build redundancy, build resilience, and also to design a better network for our reads.
Motion to approve.
So there'd be a lot of space that's needed to house it all?
No.
We have places.
It's small, it's not large equipment.
Okay.
It'll be on the shelf at public works.
Motion is second, any further questions?
Who is the second? Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Item number nine, discussion possible action. You're giving me a stink eye. An ordinance number 2025-8. Kyle, Mr. Clifton, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, City Council, Mr. Ferry. The item for you is a request to amend the UDC. And if you guys recall, most of you were around back in 2023 when we did the first round of amendments. This is a second amendment. And so again, as we kind of go through, we've got the document, it is a living document, it's intended to breathe, it's intended to be modified over time. So we find little pinch points or things that need to be clarified a little bit better, and that's really what is before you today. I know that you guys were able to get a copy of this memo that I had sent out, the city staff report. So I won't necessarily read this verbatim, but in essence, a lot of what we're trying to accomplish with this round of amendment is just procedural stuff. So we're trying to clarify board of adjustment voting protocol. There was specific use verbiage that was basically used throughout the actual document. We don't have a specific use process at the City of Claremore. Think that was kind of bleed over from the state of Texas that uses specific use quite a bit. And of course, our consultant was from the state of Texas, so I think some of that baited in there as a result.
So does that mean it just not, why, they're building, what they're building it for, or what they're gonna use it for?
No, so basically, when they use the term specific use, we use special exception. So the state of Oklahoma uses special exception. Yeah, it's just, yeah. So we've always interpreted, we've always interpreted that term to mean special exception. But we actually need to actually change it so that it actually reflects in the actual documents. Made some modifications to preliminary plats. Made some, some changes to some, the broadening use permissibility, as well as kind of better defining building variability, what we mean by that term. We clarified the lot line adjustment definition, clarified the lot split with waiver process. And there was one particular in Article 9 in the subdivision regulations where there was some guidance that actually conflicted with the IFC, so we did remove that out of the code as well. Like I said, I'm not gonna beat you guys over the head with this. I think you guys got it.
Second.
Just taking any further discussion? Lisa?
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Well, strike number 10, we don't have enough present to pass the emergency clause on item number nine. That's given to number 11.
So for clarification, this will go into effect in 30 days as opposed to immediately?
Item number 11, ordinance number 2025-9, amending zoning from neighborhood to agricultural. Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The item for you is a request to change the zoning on a piece of property that's now by the New Highway 20 interchange. It's kind of located at the north west corner of the New Highway 20 interchange and Route 66. This particular property is almost 69 acres in size, so it's a rather sizable piece of property. The change itself is to basically take it from neighborhood commercial and ag, changing it to regional commercial. The advantage there is it adds a little bit of flexibility in terms of what, what commercial development can occur on the property. But just to be clear, it is already zoned and appropriate for commercial development. So basically what we're doing is we're basically increasing basically kind of the density threshold. In terms of bulk and area requirements, the districts mimic each other really well. They're almost identical actually in terms of lawn coverage and some of the setbacks. From a past history standpoint, this has been commercial since July of 2006, so it's been almost two decades.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion is second, any further discussion?
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Thank you, Kyle. Item number 12, discussion possible action regarding contract with the park. Mr. Case?
Actually, we, no, this was supposed to be transferred to a consent agenda. That's on my, that's my fault, I failed to tell the clerk off. This is our annual renewal contract. Mark, item number 10, second.
Motion is second?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All the rates and information.
Yes, when we collect, when we pick up in Spain, we're gonna be, whatever the things.
Cotton?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Breckerhoff?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion of going to executive session?
Second. Oh, second. You're gonna disagree?
Trying. I'm trying.